All right, so I show it is six o'clock. We do, as far as I can see on the screen, have a quorum. So this is the Greenfield Public Schools Special School Committee meeting. It is Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023, 6:00 PM. And we'll go right into a roll call and call to order. Secretary Extrem, I am hoping that you are ready for that. All right.
Member Denise.
Here.
Secretary Extrem, yes, Johnson Masai is absent this evening and gave us a heads up notice. Vice Chair Martini.
I don't see her on yet. Oh, there she is. She's coming in now.
Chair Prady, I'll come back to her.
I'm here.
Member Wall.
Here.
Mayor Weedigartner.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Martini, welcome. I see her here.
I am here.
Lovely. Thank you. We are all, well, we're not all present, but we do have a quorum.
Excellent. So I called the meeting to order. It's 6:01 PM. We have the primary item on the agenda tonight is a interview of our finalists for the Director of People's Services position. And I did very late in the day, like after three o'clock, send out to all the school committee members a list of questions for this evening. I want to just take a moment and make sure everyone has the questions that I sent. Is there anyone who doesn't have them? Might be a better way to say it. Speak now. Everyone's been assigned a question as well.
I didn't realize that.
I shared it with you, Mayor, in your email.
I have it up. I have it up. I just didn't see that I, I didn't scroll far enough.
Well, there you go. There, there's one question basically for each of us. So Dave, for you, there's one question for each of us. There are six of us here this evening. And we can actually, at this point, go right into the questions. And I'm hoping you can start with telling us about what this job and working in Greenfield is of interest to you.
Yeah, so again, I've spent nearly the entirety of my career supporting districts in Franklin County. I currently.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Amy, maybe we should let David introduce himself since we haven't done that?
Sure. Why don't you go ahead and start with introducing and then I can repeat the question if you need, or you can go right in.
No, no, and it saves me from having to weave it in tactfully, right? In terms of, you know, without beating around the bush with a question. So I'm Dave Messing. You know, I currently am the Director of Student Support Services for Ralph Simha Regional in Orange, which also supports Orange Elementary Schools. And then Ralph Simha Regional supports kids from Petersham as well as Wendell. And so when we think about serving kids in Franklin County, I've started as a teacher there and came out to Western Mass. I'm from Eastern Mass originally, Plymouth County, and came out to UMass as an undergraduate and haven't left, you know, fell in love with, with the area. So I'm a husband and a father of three. I have three kids under, under six, so that keeps me on my toes. I, you know, I just fell in love with Western Mass by myself, you know, spending the rest of my, you know, my time out here. I, before this position, I worked previously in Northampton as an Associate Director for three years from seventeen to twenty. Before that, I was in a supervisor special ed position, essentially consistent with like an ETL or a consolidated team chair type position for a number of years. And before that, I was a special education teacher at the high school level at Mahar for an alternative education program. So, you know, really, I, you know, I'm, my time at UMass, I originally got my masters in special education and I've spent the last essentially ten years in a doctorate program for special ed leadership and administration and have really been studying leadership as it's applied to schools. And, you know, you talk about what interests me in this position and, and Greenfield specifically. As I said, my experience in special education, both from teaching and administration, has been in Franklin County. I think Greenfield presents some of the challenges that I'm familiar with in terms of the demographic, the towns of Orange, some of the rural, as well as some of the urban and mixed demographics. That's very consistent with my experience in Northampton. More recently, I think the, the size of a district, Greenfield's size, allows for the, the type of educational reform and district and building level leadership that I think is helpful. I think it's big enough to have the resources to do the work that needs to be done without being so big that it's impersonal and you don't have the opportunity to serve families in a meaningful way. So in terms of, you know, what, what interests me about working in Greenfield, I'm really, I'm about halfway through my career. I'm looking to really find a home that I can spend the next, you know, ten or more years doing this long-term ed reform work. You know, I understand that Greenfield's currently in a place where not all that dissimilar to where Northampton was in terms of needing to bring together a handful of schools into a more cohesive district. Certainly, I have no illusions about some of the challenges we face. You know, I think there were some challenges in our area, you know, both in the field of public education in general, but also certainly out here in Western Mass. We have some unique challenges. I think that post-pandemic, right, we're navigating some of the challenges that are unique. But I also think there's some opportunities, right? I think it allows us an opportunity to make some changes in a way that we wouldn't have been able to as quickly or with as much clarity as we would have before having this experience of a pandemic. I think coming out of that, if there's any silver lining, is that it made clear some of the work that needed to be done. I'm clear that, you know, there is folks in the administrative field and every conversation I have with the superintendent and so assistant superintendent encourages me more that there's good work being done, that people have a shared understanding of how to meet the needs of students and really being a part of that so that, you know, I can feel good about coming to work today and doing some heavy lifting in terms of that. In terms of the job in general, I think it's the intellectual stimulation. I think it's problem solving. I often say that I'm grateful that I'm not in a cubicle selling car insurance, right? No disrespect to anybody that sells car insurance. I just am grateful for the chance to solve new and interesting problems every day and feel like I'm doing good work, right? I would rather have more to do every day and wonder where the time goes than be looking for something to do and, you know, and feel like, oh, you know, here we go again. So I really just have a, a real interest in continuing the work of ed leadership and learning about the good work that's already happening and contributing the work that will happen over the next, you know, you know, the next ten years or so, if not into the, beyond that. So I'm really excited.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. And I'm not gonna keep interrupting. Yeah, that's you. You guys can follow along and, and go ahead. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. How do you describe your leadership style and what qualities do you think strong leaders need to possess?
Yeah, I would say, you know, somewhere between servant leadership, right? In terms of meeting the needs of, of the people under my care, right? I think, you know, leadership authority is earned, right, not given. So in terms of taking care of the educators in your charge, making sure you're fulfilling their responsibilities that you're given, you know, with any position like this. Certainly, it's adaptive. And by that, I mean being able to be flexible in your approaches to meet the needs. You know, the six buildings in, in Greenfield are different, even though they're in the same, same building. That requires somebody to, to be flexible in their approach. I think strong leaders have to have an understanding of leadership as a subject area, right? Different leadership styles, different leadership practices. We're fortunate to have a tremendous amount of, of knowledge about what works in leadership, specifically what works in educational leadership. You know, we're better off than we ever have been in our field about good teaching and how to support teachers in doing that work. The research continues to move forward in terms of how to meet the needs of all kids, whether it be those who are neurodiverse, right, students with disabilities, say, or culturally and linguistically diverse, right? So things that we can do, not to, to fix things that might have gone sideways for students, but things to plan so that we can do things in a way that meets the needs of all kids. I think that's really important for leaders to have an understanding. I think leaders have to be clear about their expectations, about what targets for success criteria are, right? I think you have to be clear about where you're going if you want people to get on board and, and go with you to get there. I think it's important that leaderships have empathy, right, have some humanity and understand that whatever the challenge may be, whatever people's presentation may be in a given moment, whether that's a staff member, whether that's a parent, certainly if that's a student, an understanding of what circumstances that individual might be navigating that you might not be familiar with and, and being able to explore before you respond, right? Like what is really going on? What is the need? Leadership, you know, is about communicating effectively, right? Being clear with people about here's why we're doing what we're doing, about being inclusive in terms of soliciting input from, from all stakeholders, about, you know, what's important? What do you understand is important? What are perspectives? I think that's important to get to the best solutions, right? If we're incorporating all input, we might not necessarily move forward with the, the choices that different folks may make, but we hope that our decision-making is better off because we've had all of those viewpoints demonstrated. And that's important certainly when we're meeting the needs of diverse groups within our district, right? Making sure that we hear, hey, how is what's important to you related to what's important to other folks? And then how does that fit into this bigger puzzle? So we're moving everybody forward. You know, talking about strong leaders, you know, need to be patient. They need to be sensitive to the amount of time that the work takes. In, in our field, that has to do with organizational change theory, right? Understanding about organizational learning. How are we getting better as administrators every month, every semester, every year? So that over the course of time, we're better at doing some of the same things and we're building a better organization in terms of learning how to respond to similar challenges, as well as developing the capacity of others, right? Like strong leaders are, are defined by the leaders that they help develop. And I think nowhere is that better seen than talking about developing capacity of a teacher or a teaching group or, you know, subsections of a professional learning community. But I think it has to do with a mixture of technical skill and then humanity, right? I think a strong leader has to have a sense of humor, certainly in this work. If you're gonna, you know, none of us are making it out alive, right? So might as well be, have a, have a sense of humor because or else the work, you know, is just, is just challenging at times. So, yeah, I think those are, are the qualities that I think are, are most important in our work, especially in, in schools.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, my iPad, now that I've located it. Anyway, who are your mentors or role models? And what did you learn from them and are able to apply to your work? And yes, I heard my accent, Amy.
I would say there are two that, that come to mind. One is Dr. John Provost. He's a current superintendent in Hampton-Webraham, former longtime superintendent in Northampton, and then before that, longtime special ed director in Agawam. From John, I, I learned the importance of humility in leadership. I learned the importance of understanding the technical aspects of the work, right? So what needs to be done and how does what we know about the work that needs to be done compare to what we're seeing? As well as needing to be comfortable in a leadership role. And that is to say not shying away from saying, this is hard and this is challenging. But, you know, if it is to be, it is to be me, right? There has to be somebody who's willing to stand up and deliver when folks might have concerns about things of, of different nature. So that mixture of technical skill and strength of conviction, understanding that if I believe strongly enough in the, the need to ensure that our public schools are supporting the needs of all learners, that I'm willing to put in the work, roll up my sleeves and do the heavy lifting and not shy away from difficult conversations, not be thrown off when going gets tough or when, you know, there are people who might not be thrilled about decisions when we understand that it's in the best interest of kids, right? Being willing to bear some of that discomfort for the kids and families that we serve. You know, similarly, Dr. Pam Plummer, who was a former Director of Student Support Services in Northampton, has since shifted to a leadership consulting role with the Department of Ed. From her, I learned, you know, what it looks like to really maintain your humanity while doing this work. I watched Pam work tirelessly in settings that were often very tense and responding to the needs of multiple stakeholders. When we were in Northampton, we had a school committee that was diverse and not always on the same page about what priorities were. We had a, a teaching association that was at times bordering on belligerent. And yet, and we had a host of, of the challenges of a, of urban, rural and diverse in terms of socioeconomic status districts. So from Pam, I learned really what it looks like to keep one's humanity as you respond to the almost endless demands on your time, demands on your patience. I saw what it looked like to, to do good work and, and really sacrifice for kids' best interest and then be, be shouted at for it and still, you know, own that and be okay with that because that's part of the work that we do. I learned how to have a sense of humor in the face of the, the difficult work and to really be comfortable with knowing that when we know what the research tells us, when we know what the people that were, the teachers that are, are doing the work are telling us and we're comfortable standing by it, that we can persevere in the face of, you know, what might be political, politically convenient for certain stakeholders at times. So I would say, you know, between Dr. Provost and, and Dr. Plummer, I had some great role models in what it means to conduct oneself in these settings. I think for me, there's also been a blend. I had the, the benefit of engaging with, with John specifically ten years ago, at first, when I was a, a younger professional. And that also was helpful coming of age personally, right? So I really feel that we are fortunate in the work that we do in public ed. There's a connection between our professional development and these intimate connections with families and family story and our own human experience. I firmly believe that my own personal experience is much richer because of my exposure to, to families. And I think the exposure to, to Dr. Provost and Dr. Plummer has helped me sort of integrate those. So we talk about work-life balance. We talk about how do you do this work? Really, for me, the, the self-actualization, right? The, the best I can hope for in terms of a life well-lived is to develop the highest version of myself by developing myself in a, an endeavor like this during doing hard work, coming home spent at the end of the day, you know, like the whole man in the arena speech, right? Feeling like, yeah, we've done something worthwhile. And if we, if we, you know, failed, then we failed trying something that was challenging and, and got back up and did it again the next day. So in terms of how that applies to the work, you know, really, it has to do with showing up every day and, and bringing the technical skills and the human qualities to help bring out the best in others to get the work done. I think that is, is probably in a nutshell the, the finest point I could run.
Thank you. I appreciate your response.
Yes, thank you. And I have a two-part question. First, could you talk about your strengths as an administrator? And then second, could you give us an example of a time when you worked collaboratively with an administrator to improve a process or make a needed improvement in a program? Thank you.
So I think my strengths as an administrator are, are twofold. I think it has to do really with my experience and technical training. I had the good fortune of, of going through a master's program at UMass and a world-class special education administration program at UMass under one of the former presidents of the Council for Acceptable Children, right? I, I feel like I've been very well-trained in terms of my understanding of, of current theory, not only the, the policy of, of special education and practice, but what it means to apply leadership skills to the administration of special education, current trends, previous trends in the field. You know, how we might use things that we've learned over the last fifty years, in the last five years, right, the last three years, to be able to carry the work forward. I think my experiences both as a teacher, as a crisis prevention and de-escalation trainer, as a team chair, you know, I, in, in the span of several years, I ran, you know, somewhere like two thousand meetings, right? Team meetings are just doing a lot of those repetitions and having those experiences and understanding where the, the trouble spots are and how to get to the heart of it, how to get to distill the, the value of it. I think those experiences are tremendously helpful. My experiences in Northampton, supporting, you know, about a hundred English language learners, that was a learning experience for me. I think that's helpful in understanding the things that are similar in their experience in terms of being in classrooms that aren't always necessarily designed to meet their needs and then things we can do to make those environments more inclusive for them. And that has to do not only with the language barrier stuff, but also in times culturally, cultural sensitivity when we talk about different learners. I, I also think my personal attributes and personal experience lend themselves well to this job. You know, I grew up sort of firmly middle-class to two professional parents. Never, I was always fairly successful in school. When I dropped out of high school, I was in honors and AP classes. You know, for me, it wasn't about being able to do the work, right? Schools in, you know, back then in the late nineties were not interested in, in supporting me. I understand that even as a kid with a tremendous amount of privilege, that, uh, school wasn't designed for me. And if I could make it happen with all the privilege that I had, how is somebody without all of those strengths possibly gonna have a chance? But also, I think just my character, right, my patience, my humility. I think my sort of worldview in terms of, you know, trying to be a decent citizen really lend themselves well to coming in to, to do work in school settings. I think I'm a, I'm a intellectual. I'm interested by, you know, subject matter. I think education's important. So I think schools are a great place for me to go and work. I'm excited to work with folks and to, you know. I, I say, there are things about teaching I don't miss, but I miss teaching every day, right? So anytime we can, you know, be in front of kids and there are staff and teaching them, I think that's important. So I think those are really my strengths as an administrator. You know, there's a couple of times when you talk about an example that I worked collaboratively to improve a program. When I got to Northampton, Northampton High, their alternative program was in flux. They had had a couple of models. Anytime you're talking about alternative programs, this one specifically was emotionally and behaviorally disordered students. So really, potential for violence, potential for significant language outbursts, really that interfered with these students' ability to participate in learning. And certainly, as people might understand, difficulty participating in general education classes. So the work that I did there was with the current principal, current vice principal or vice principals at that time and the staff to understand what changes had been made, what had been the impact of that. So people who had been affiliated with the program, we did a lot of work to try and do some analyzing that the causes of the difficulty they were having. So we did some root cause analysis about, wait a minute, why are we having the experience we're having? We talked about staffing in terms of making sure that they were able to meet the needs of the students that we were claiming to be able to meet. We talked about staff training, you know, where, where is their capacity that we don't have? And how can we get people the skills to solve these problems? We talked about entrance criteria, right? Are we clear about the needs that we're looking to support so that it's not just a dumping ground or a fishbowl for all these kids that aren't successful? We were thoughtful about what we were doing with our time, right? How do we expect staff to be using their time? How do we expect students to be using their time? What are the policies of the high school in terms of student conduct that aren't really that important, frankly? You know, in terms of not throwing up additional barriers. So we were able to help kids get food in the classroom in the mornings, right? Because it wasn't a big deal. We were able to, you know, have those conversations. We were able to budget for it effectively, to make sure we were able to build capacity and get the materials that we needed to teach the classes we needed in that setting. Another example, while I was in Northampton, I also supported the middle school. At that time, this was 2017, 2018, the middle school, the performance of English language learners was in the first percentile for the state. So literally, the, they couldn't have, students in English language learners couldn't have been learning any less at that time. So we obviously had an urgency to that work. I worked with the principal. I worked with the English language educator at that time. We worked with general ed teachers at the middle school grade levels to find out what is going on. Some of that was the transience of those students, for example, Hurricane Maria and the students joining us from Puerto Rico who were just trying to land, just trying to get safety and get their basic needs met. But similarly, we talked about capacity. We were able, you know, we were able to understand that we needed to group students differently if we were gonna give them the, with the skills that they needed. So you're talking about the different language domains that English learners need to look at. So we added, we budgeted for another position, and then we also used time differently. We used, we were able to increase the amount of service that was provided in general ed classrooms. So students weren't missing access to their, their general ed teachers. I love the idea of supporting kids in a small group. I also want kids to have access to a certified English teacher, a certified math teacher, a certified science teacher. We were able to take a look at what it was we were using for curriculum when we were in those small groups just doing that English language education work. We incorporated with state stakeholders about, hey, how can we use turnaround grant money effectively? And then braid it in to make sure that there wasn't a huge budget hit to the district and we were able to sort of ramp up and then ramp down that, those expenses. So those were two examples, one of, on the high school level, working with some administration and, and staff, and then one at the middle school level, supporting English learners, where I think we were able to look at the program as a whole, look at what our desired outcomes were, and then identify how what we were doing was different from what we needed to do to get to those outcomes.
Am I, am I next? I'm sorry. Okay. Hello, David. Nice to meet you. My name is Elizabeth. My question is around inclusion. What is your approach to developing and implementing diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives within an educational setting? And how would you ensure that these initiatives are effectively executed and sustained over time? And what are the metrics by which you would gauge inclusivity? And how does that relate to and directly affect special education?
Interesting. Yeah, I think at its base, one of the things, and I think it's important, and I like the framing of the question, it's important to note the difference between inclusion isn't just special education, right? You talk about neurodiverse learners as, as well as the other ways that students might be different from each other. When you think about, do you think about the DEI work, right? It really is about how are our systems, in these cases, our, our public schools, serving the people they're intended to serve? We tend to think that's students, but we forget that that's also families. That's also community stakeholders. That's also staff that work in the organization, right? So thinking about how are we meeting the needs of everybody involved? One of the things that, that we have to be thoughtful about when we're talking about metrics is passive versus active approaches. So I really appreciate you thinking about the initiatives because it's what are we actively doing to increase the degree to which we're meeting the needs of everybody in a certain way? So for example, you know, it's not just, you know, when you think of inclusion specifically from special education, we tend to think of it as a place, right? The inclusion classroom or an inclusion model is the general ed classroom with typical peers, whatever a typical peer looks like. Generally, you know, neurotypical or, or age level, grade level peers in a certain class. But then we have to be, broaden that definition. And that's why it's important to think about diversity and equity as well, to think about what are the outcomes and what are the experiences that different people are having? And I, and that has everything to do with, you know, various forms of culture when you talk about metrics, right? How well are students of any different subgroup identified? And we want to be thoughtful about not only the, the metrics that the state sets up, right? Because oftentimes, they won't have a sufficient group. The group won't be big enough for the state to even report that data, right? So if the N, right, or the sample size, the population size is too small, they won't actually give us any information. So we have to do a good job about being thoughtful internally at the district level, depending on what it is. So if we're talking about indicators, we're talking about number of individuals served. We're talking about a spending in different ways. How much are we spending on students of a, with a certain need? We talk about metrics about, for example, disability category. Is there a difference in how we're identifying students? Is there a difference in what students are getting individual evaluations completed or not? Is there a difference in what students are getting in terms of frequency of service? So all of those, depending on what the initiative is, it'll be, I give you more thoughtful and comprehensive answer about what those indicators would be. But the metrics I would hope would be those consistent with the initiative laid out. But it's gonna have to be number of individuals served, intensity, right, or frequency and duration or outcome, right? This specific thing, the number of individuals meeting a certain level, the number of paraprofessionals reaching a measure of capacity. So for example, passing the parapro assessment if we had individuals that didn't. And then making sure that we were recruiting so that if we're talking about staffing, that we are looking for increasing the number of diverse individuals in the workforce so that it's more representative of our. diverse individuals in the workforce so that it's more representative of our community, right? We're not interested in diversity and equity just for the sake of being like, hey, look at us, we're doing this DEI work. It's about, we want individuals to come to a school and be a part of an organization that is reflected of the community around them. What we can't fail to see is that systems that are currently in place, and the reason we're having this conversation is historically, systems have not done that, right? Systems have thrown up barriers that either conspicuously in some cases, or in other cases, a little bit more subtly, right, which is the insidious thing. Have kept that from being the case. So that's why we need to be proactive and say, is there a reason we're not seeing more individuals of a certain ethnic background, of a certain gender in some cases, of a certain demographic in that way? Are there, you know, are we underserving individuals based on their socioeconomic status, right? As in education, one of the things we have to be very careful of is that a small group of affluent folks isn't able to get, you know, their needs met in a way that individuals with less ability to advocate for themselves, less ability to leverage the systems are there. So we have to think about evening the playing field. So equity isn't about everybody gets the same thing. It's about everybody gets what they need to have a similar experience to reach a similar outcome. You know, we were talking about memes earlier, you talked about that image with the fence and different stepstools to have everybody there. There's another one that I really like a lot, that's an apple tree and it talks about, you know, everybody gets the same sized ladder. Or everybody, you know, gets the tree bent, you know. So everybody has the same access to the same number of apples, right? So it really has to do with how are we distributing resources so that they meet the needs of everybody we say we're attempting to meet? And that that's representative of all of the folks we are, we are designed to serve, right? So members of our community. Depending on metrics, you know, it's going to have to do with resources. It's going to have to do with the amount of money spent. How much time are we spending on this? How many positions are here? To what degree are student, you know, student outcomes, staff outcomes? So there's a lot of those things, you know, so again, not to dodge that part of the question, but to have a meaningful conversation about, we want to know what initiative we're talking about. And we could carry that forward. Yeah, but why is it important in special education? A number of reasons, right? One, it's the whole reason special education exists. Really, special education exists to protect families, in some cases of the most vulnerable families, from districts that historically didn't have an incentive to do right by them, right? We're talking about the horrors of 50 years ago and we've come a long way from there, but we still have a long way to go in my view. In terms of making sure that there's the shared understanding of why there are curb cuts. Yes, it's helpful for, for individuals with wheelchairs. It's also helpful for folks with strollers, right? It's also helpful for people on rollerblades. Like if we do things in a way that are accessible to more people, more people have positive outcomes in that way. It's important, you know, the DEI work is important in special education. Because if we care about the learning outcomes and keeping spending responsible for special education, it doesn't start with special education. It starts with our tier one general ed program that meets the needs of more students, right? We don't have to come in over the top and fix learning gaps that have developed. If we've created initial learning experiences from EI and pre-K on that meet the needs of more learners, so that whether an individual has a disability or not, whether they're learning English as a second or third language or not, they're able to make gains, right? Because special education isn't about having a disability. It's about having a disability that has prevented you from deriving the benefit of the public education that you deserve. So, you know, DEI work is important in special education because we need to make sure that we're not letting folks fall through the gaps. We need to make sure that we're looking at how we do things and how does that make some kids more likely to learn how to read and write and do math than others? And then we need to make sure that for those kids that are coming to us, even from other communities or other states, you know, and they land here, that we have the tools to be able to backfill those gaps in the time that we have with them. So that they can do it. And that, you know, again, you think about in any school district, the significance of the special ed budget as opposed to the size of the overall budget. It's not just about, you know, managing that bottom line, but it's ensuring that we are educating all kids in a responsible way. And you can't do that without being mindful about the diversity that we see and the equity. And then, you know, inclusion, for us to be serious about educating folks in, you know, an inclusive setting, we have to have a range of programming. For some kids, the general ed classroom is not the most inclusive setting because they don't have access to their peers. They don't have access to curriculum that's meaningful for them. So you talk about, okay, now we need different programs, whether it be partial inclusion programs, substantially separate programs that I'm biased towards. I believe that we need programs of that sort. We need collaborative level programs and separate day school programs. If we're serious about educating kids in their community schools. And the more of that continuum of services, the more spread of those programs we have, the bigger our capacity to meet the needs of different learners in our community schools, the better off we are on almost any metric you're talking about. So I think there's a real integration of those concepts. But I think the process of special education is a great lens through which to look at DEI as a broader sort of construct in public ed as well as, you know, society at large, if you will.
Thank you so much. That was very in depth.
You're muted, Roxanne.
Whoever that was. So, good evening, David. This is Mayor Weeta Gartner and I am a member of the school committee. And I also have a two-part question. Well, I lost my questions, but I will get them back up very soon. Okay. What does strong school-based leadership mean to you as an administrative issue and learning strategy? That's number one. And how do you work to balance school-based management and central office supervision?
So really, school-based leadership, you know, really has to do with where the work is done. If we're serious about a unit of analysis, we're talking about a student, then we're talking about a classroom. And then depending on the situation, we're talking about a hallway or grade level team, grade level and then building. So if we're talking about school-based leadership, there can't be any success in a top-down situation. Because you're farthest away from the kids and the work you're trying to do. If we understand that the work of teaching and learning happens between teachers and students and then all of the other related service providers, parent educators and folks that are involved in that work. Again, not to, not to leave out any, all the other staff that are out of schools to work. You can't have any of that work move forward without strong school-based leadership. So strong school-based leadership isn't just an administrative position, a principal, a vice principal, a dean. It really has to do with teacher leaders. It really has to do with informal leadership, right? This idea of schools are networks of people that are either advice-seeking from one another or working together to get tasks done. So you need school-based leadership to create and maintain conditions that allow for that, right? So thinking about a school-based leader, whether they be a department chair, like at a high school level, whether they be a vice principal, a principal, or they just be a teacher leader, right? A veteran teacher that's beloved, that everybody goes to because they know where to get things and where the, that closet is on the floor that's hidden away with the books that you need, right? School-based leadership is as close to where the action is. And it is also the point of contact, right? That cliche about like rubber hitting the road. When we talk about leadership in general, so when we talk about administrative issue, nothing can happen that impacts teaching and learning quickly that isn't happening at the school level. That isn't happening at the classroom level, the grade level, subject matter level, for example. So there has to
Right now.
I'm sorry? So that's sort of the administrative issue piece is if you're serious, like the work is done, work of school improvement and educational form is done with and through people. And so that has to start at the school and it's not just people in formal positions of authority, like I was saying, but it's leadership in all, in all places. It's a learning strategy, both in terms of strategies for insurance students learn, but also professional learning, right? Or a learning organization. If I'm interested in ensuring that teachers can learn how to use a particular curriculum or use a strategy, help use some, some teaching strat, we know more about how, what good teaching looks like than we ever have before. So if I'm serious about building the average teacher or a new teacher who's, you know, wet behind the ears, just came out of a practicum and is trying to make sense of a scary world around them. There's no better way to help arm them with that, those tools, show them how to do it, give them the support that they need, the coaching, the experiences, set clear expectations and cycles of feedback than at the school level. So when you talk about, it's not just an administrative issue, but it's a learning strategy, both to support learning of students and to create conditions where adults are learning as well, right? That's why I love the idea of principals as lead learners, right? They are both leading the learning and they are also a learner themselves. So school-based leadership creates and maintains conditions for improvement of everybody involved. Great. When you talk about this connection between school-based and central office leadership, you know, it's helpful to, one of the analogies you use is like the difference between the dance floor and the balcony, right? So if you think about being in a dance hall and you're looking at being on the floor, doing the work, that's great, right? You're doing dancing, you're doing the day-to-day work, rolling up your sleeves, doing some of the things I just referenced in terms of implementing those initiatives and then checking on how they're working and then doing that over and over again until things are the way they're supposed to be. But then you also have to be able to pull back. So when you talk about central office supervision, part of that is being pulling back from that, and they talk about the balcony. Not in terms of a top-down flow chart, in terms of the hierarchy, right? But in terms of being able to look at the dance floor and see how the pieces are moving in a different way and get a respect for and an understanding of things that you don't see when you're dancing yourself, right? That you need that bird's eye view. And then going back down to the dance floor with that information and helping understand moving with the dancers, shifting where people are so that you're using the whole dance floors, that people aren't bumping into each other. So that you protect somebody from dancing too close to the stairwell and having an accident, right? Or knocking into a group of tables, right? So from a central office piece, if we're doing our jobs, we're creating conditions for principals to do their jobs and creating conditions for teachers to do their jobs so that everybody can create conditions for kids to do their jobs, right? Like that really is the connection between school-based leadership and district leadership. And then it's reciprocal because central office needs to be going to those folks, not just people in formal positions of authority like principals, but teachers, teacher leaders and students to be able to understand what their experience is so that then we can get those same feedback loops for ourselves to do that work. So this connection between school-based leadership and district leadership is, you know, is critical to be able to maintain and improve over time. Especially in a context like Greenfield, right, where you have a couple of schools and you can do this work in an intimate way at scale. Which I think is really one of the things that's so encouraging about having all of the raw materials for success in the district in a way that's, I hope everybody drives encouragement from.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Dave. That is the end of our formal questions for you. But certainly, we want to give you an opportunity to ask any questions you might have for us.
No, I mean, really, it has to do with, you know, like I don't imagine there's always consensus about what the highest priorities are, right? Questions I have really, you know, there's a lot of nuts and bolts questions I'm interested in that, you know, that are beyond the scope of tonight's conversation. You know, but really, if, you know, if there was a thought, the school committee's priority, right? In terms of the top couple of things, when you think about of all the work to be done, of all the important, good work that we should feel like is necessary, is there an understanding in terms of school committee about where to start, right? How does that map with the community's piece? So just, you know, if any, is there any clarity about, about district priorities from the school's point of view?
I think, I think that's a really, really important question for the school committee. And I'll certainly open it up to other members to give their thoughts if they have them. I have had some conversations with the superintendent and been pretty vocal about needing to expand our capacity in special ed. We do spend a lot of funds sending students out of district for their, to meet their special ed needs. And if we have the ability and the staffing to build additional capacity within the district, I think we can improve not only the experience for our students so that they're staying in their home district and their families, but also that we can improve the bottom line. Because there is a great deal of funding that does go to other educational facilities to educate our students. And I think we'd like to make some changes in that regard. And I would leave it at that because I'm not an expert on special ed, but you know, that's kind of where I see that we could really make some improvements. And certainly, if anyone else wanted to add anything, they absolutely should.
As always, I do. I, there are, I think that there are things that we could expand on just in how we work with our students in special ed beyond school. More, and I don't mean, you know, going into their homes or anything like that, but there are things which may happen, may not happen. There are things that, some social pieces that I think were missing. And I think that that would do a great deal to assist our community with growth. And I would like to see some of that. That's always sort of been my big thing. And, you know, we have a unique situation is that in our school committee is that there are a number of members that have special needs kids. And so we are living this day-to-day and have been for years and have seen the good, the bad and the ugly. And that's how it is with all special ed programs. But, but there are, there are some very, you know, personal views that we all take. And I, and I also know that we work very hard to not try to blur those with our roles on school committee and with our role of being parents. And, and so just, I guess that's my thoughts.
Anyone else? Or any other questions for us?
I have a few. I think that there is at least some basic consensus on this committee about the need to prioritize student outcomes and in particular, student outcomes for disabled students. This is an area in which Greenfield struggles a lot. And that of course is due to a myriad of different factors, but I do think that we at that basic level have identified that pretty consistently. As something that's important to the school committee. I think are important. And I don't think anybody would disagree with me, but feel free to. Is that, I'm thinking of three things. One, we tend to have silos in Greenfield between general and special education a lot. And I have often said at our committees, almost all of the time, at least for part of their time, if not most of it. I think that
Quite a bit. If you can hear me, your audio is breaking, breaking up quite a bit. I wonder if you should just turn your camera off and see if that will help with having it be a little
Yeah, I'll try that.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me, let me know if it continues to be an issue.
If you could start with, and we're going to say three things. If you could start with your first thing again and go from
Okay. And I was talking about Greenfield having some silos into which general and special education seem to be separated and this being an issue for students because almost all students in special education are also general education students and they need more continuity between the two and more communication and cooperation. So that I think is one of, one of the main challenges. Greenfield has also had some struggles with basic processes in special education. And that's kind of the boring tedious side of the job, but there needs to be a better handle on those processes so that parents and caregivers are truly being given the opportunity to be equal members of the team, which they're not able to do if they don't have, you know, basic information and timelines and things like that that are followed diligently. And the third thing, I think, which the district is admirably tackling right now is improving our capacity to deliver consistent evidence-based instruction. And that's definitely taking place from the perspective that you talked about. In that it starts in tier one. However, that needs to be a comprehensive approach that goes all the way through RTI levels and into special education. So those I think are the three. So those, I think, are the three, the three big things that come to mind for me as far as what I what I hope to see happen in terms of special education in the in the future in Greenfield.
Thank you. Any other questions for us, Dave?
No, no, I know. So many, but as I said, as I said in my last interview, you know, not not that we have time for this evening, I imagine for sure.
Well, we appreciate your time and we're going to have to ask you to be a little bit patient. We have one short agenda item we're going to do publicly here. And then for you, as well as for folks that are on the call, the meeting with us, we are going to go into a separate Zoom session for an executive session. And then we're going to come back to this one for some additional public votes on two items. And I'm going to ask folks to, right now, take just a couple of minutes. We have two of our members. This is on the agenda is item number three. Two of our members are going tomorrow to the Mass Association of School Committees Day on the Hill. This is an advocacy day with our legislators. And I remember Martini had asked me, and I thought it was a really important idea, if we could take just a few minutes now to gather ideas, topics, things to point out to legislators from us that we would want to be highlighted tomorrow. And so if any, if any of you have, so it's Elizabeth and Catherine that are going tomorrow. And so if you have items for them that you'd like to make sure they highlight from, obviously, a school committee perspective, because I have ones from community college, I'm sure the mayor has some from the mayoral perspective, but we're going to stick to school committees for this discussion. But please, and let's just do, let's try to keep it brief, so maybe five minutes. I'll start. That 14% BS of the increase in in special ed tuition that was neither discussed or done on an appropriate timeline for schools and districts to respond to. I'd like to know a little bit around how districts are going to be made made right around that because to increase it by 14% is just totally uncalled for, completely disables us in terms of planning. And any justification, of course, would be important to hear because I haven't heard any yet. But anything around what they plan to do to help with funding would be awesome. Anyone else have anything? Please, member extra, go ahead.
I'm actually really interested to hear what happens with the Medicare piece. I assume you guys are going to go. And those funds being returned to school districts directly. I know legally that doesn't have to happen right now, but I'm interested to hear what happens. So maybe you could poke someone specifically?
We have a meeting at 12:30 with Rep. Blay and at 1:30 with Comfort.
Yep, that's great. I wish I was able to go. I've just been MIA in my neighborhood for a couple of weeks, though I unfortunately can't. But I'm thrilled you guys are going. That's awesome.
Anything else anyone would want to highlight? Superintendent, please.
So I will be speaking next Monday. I'm one of the superintendents asked to give some remarks to Secretary Dotweiler, who's the Education Secretary. And the remarks I will be giving are related to the staffing crisis and preparatory programs for educational-related staff. So any opportunity you may have to weave in what plans the state is is creating, how they plan to support the pipeline through higher education, through even high school prep programs and dual dual enrollment, anything that they are trying to do to support the need because from a school committee, that's affecting your budget, it's affecting compliance, it's affecting, I mean, you folks offered staffing issues all for the past two years. So I'm not sure it's a real stretch for you to think about the impact. But I will be speaking to that to the secretary. And then if you get an audience, I would cheer you on with that conversation.
Anything else anyone would want to add? I apologize for the dog whining in the background if you can hear her. This is her standard Zoom meeting behavior. Okay, so again, I thank you both for attending tomorrow and representing us. And we look forward to report on that. And at this time, I would entertain a motion for executive session for exemption reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, as well as exemption reason eight, to consider or interview applicants for employment or appointment by a preliminary screening committee. If the chair declares, and I do declare, that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants, provided, however, that this clause shall not apply to any meeting, including meetings of a preliminary screening committee to consider and interview applicants who pass a prior preliminary screening. The committee will return to open session. And can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
So that was Ekstrom and Denise, and we do for executive session need a roll call vote.
Member Denise.
Yes.
Secretary Ekstrom, Miami, yes. Vice Chair Martini.
Yes.
Chair Prori.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Is.
Mayor Wieda Gartner, we are, we have, are unanimous.
Yes, my.
I didn't say.
My understanding is the mayor is actually going to leave us and go to Ways and Means. We do, we do still have a forum without her, so we thank you for joining us tonight and.
I just wanted to thank David for being here and for such thoughtful and really, really eloquent answers to the questions. So very much appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will leave this session open. And I would actually ask if, let me, I'm going to try to log us into the executive session, but if someone else who has our login could start the Zoom for the executive session, that would be great, either Ekstrom or the superintendent and I see you all kind of disappear. What's that?
Executive session has started and I'm going to pause the recording, if that's okay, of this.
Yes. Yep, so glad you stayed with us.
As I said, Amy, I had to save hosting capabilities because we were all leaving.
Well, I stayed. That's why I stayed and had a second thing set up.
Oh, well. They Dave had all authority over our meeting while we were gone because I handed him the host.
Hey.
Perhaps you should be concerned with how quickly we were saying like, yep, you're in charge, we're out.
What did you get up to while we were gone?
I I had one eye on it. He didn't do anything and no funny business, as far as I could tell. So we are deaf in public session. The recording has been started. We have two items to vote on. The first being finding my. Okay, so I would like a motion first to accept the employment agreement from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2026 for the Director of People's Services for the Greenfield Public School District. Someone. Anyone? Member Denise, and a second, please.
Second.
Second from Secretary Ekstrom. And we are in a remote meeting, so we do have to do a roll call vote.
Yep, number Denise.
Yes.
Secretary Ekstrom, yes. Vice Chair Martini.
Yes.
Chair Prori.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
Unanimous, yes.
And that passes unanimously. Dave Messing, congratulations. Welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools. We are very happy to have you and looking forward to you being part of the team. And we also have one quick other item to vote on. I would take a motion to approve the FY23 contract addendum for the current Director of People's Services.
So moved.
Wall moved it.
There we go. There we go. And a roll call vote, please.
Member Denise.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Vice Chair Martini.
Yes.
Prori.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
We are unanimous on that as well.
Thank you. Thank you all. And I would, of course, take the final motion of the evening, a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Somewhere, there was a second from Member Wall, and we of course have to still do a roll call vote.
Member Denise.
Yes.
Secretary Ekstrom, yes. Vice Chair Martini.
Yes.
Chair Prori.
Yes.
Member Wall. We are close and unanimous about that.
And that is adjournment at 7:22. And again, thank you all. Thank you, Susan Farber. Thank you to the superintendent and to Vice Chair Martini. And of course, welcome to Greenfield Public Schools, Dave. We look forward to working with you.